You still need a second or good?
Yes. Good when you are made.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the order of the committee of the whole meeting at five thirty four. First step, they go to the order and the council members have anything to get it or you can all be your councilor. So review of regular meeting agenda would just be whether any consent items, let's see what we had. Any consent items that you have a question on that we like you will be important. It's a good handle that we can hopefully keep our consent agenda intact where we did to go. So we'll go into each work. Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead. We have on the agenda, there's number one, adoption of revenues. We put that on there, but way back from the way we handled it in the prior years. Revenues are on the agenda items for the preliminary budget and final budget, so you can go revenues in that way. So we're in a whole new business on that adoption of the revenues and incorporate it into the preliminary budget. Okay, we'll have the discussion first. Oh, we're gonna have the wait to have the discussion. Now, we're gonna do the presentation under public hearing, the presentation of the revenues and the revenue hearing. That can move forward to the adoption of the revenues and the preliminary budget cycle and final budget. So are you totally gonna cross that off or are we just gonna discuss that there's no adoption on the table? Happy to discuss, we can leave it on there and just won't be adoption.
Right, okay, yeah.
Alright, so let's go ahead and move to our first discussion item, which is memorandum of understanding. It's Snoqualmie Valley Economic Alliance. And we have a few guests here, we have Rob and sorry, Walton, thank you. Please be councilmembers to Snoqualmie and I guess should I turn it over to Director Thomas to start as well?
Maybe we can let, let's see, she's Mrs. Dodge is in there as well. So this is something that they've been working on for quite a while. I've been able to attend a couple of meetings and so here tonight they're kind of here to give us the one on one because there is an MOU that all the cities are looking at adopting in the next couple of meetings. And so they'd like to give a short discussion and presentation.
Alright, well, thank you very much. I'm the leadoff, I'm Rob Walton. My, my day job is I, I work in North Bend. My evening job is in Snoqualmie at the City Council, North Bend and the banner of the day. And we are also the host of Snow Valley Innovation Center. And that's the organization, the five one C three that this particular association is related to. So long about March, Anthony Dodge with the King County Department of Local Services brought this idea forth to our organization of bringing cities together on a USDA grant. Well, we got a month or two into the discussions and we realized other communities were about six months ahead of us. So we decided to back off on submitting that grant. But one of the essentials of it was the address of North Bend allowed us to apply. It's kind of a weird thing because really it benefits the whole Snoqualmie Valley. And so we put this group together with the idea of applying for future grants and having this structure in place. And it's a brilliant idea, actually, isn't it? You know, a lot of the credit goes over to Anthony Dodge for bringing that program. And that is, you know, we have four smaller cities. We don't have all the bandwidth, we're doing economic development individually. And if we can band together, whether it's all four cities or three or two, we have a structure in place so we can show that we're an organization of just an alliance helping each other out. And, and the other thing that we found out too was in our work with State of Washington and SR eighteen, kind of unrelated, but we weren't able to do it on our own. It required a lot of other cities coming together and giving us that voice. And one of the kind of anomalies is this is a great place for like motion pictures to come and do their work. But we're King County and so the state recognizes it as an urban county when we who live here know it's different. And we need a different designation. So our hope is that we could go as a contingency to Olympia and get them to change that so that we get the same benefits the rural counties have in attracting, you know, economic development, whether it's film and, and those things or other things. And farming, I mean, where does farming happen? It doesn't happen in Seattle, it happens in Snoqualmie Valley. And so it's a place where we can help preserve, you know, our heritage and what, you know, we find to be so important. So that's where we're at and we're, I'm going to turn it over to Angelie to give the presentation because she's put it all nicely together and packed it for us.
Yeah, and this may be answered in the presentation, so I'll just, but you said get, get Olympia to change that. What is that? Give, give all the, yeah.
All the, all the other counties are designated as rural and so they get the benefit of the tax credits for the film industry except King County. Right, and we're just lumped in together and so we don't get that benefit.
So we, the whole King County to change to be?
No, we would, because we want to ask for Snoqualmie Valley.
I see.
And, and we have with four cities coming along, we're gonna have more, you know, more profits.
And something about Department of Local Services, which is the department I'm with with King County, is that most of the areas we serve are rural. So they are, there are areas of the county that are designated a rural, but like Rob said, unfortunately, it often gets lumped into as an urban area. So this really kind of just subments the character as rural and in different ways. Although the cities are in urban growth boundaries, right? That says it's, it's a, an urban area, the unincorporated areas in between are all rural. So we'll get into that a little bit. I'm Angelie Dodge, I'm with the Department of Local Services. Like I mentioned, I'm the program manager for an Economic Alliance program for unincorporated King County. So we serve over a hundred, fifteen hundred square miles across the county. So all the way down to places like Inumclaw, over to Vashon. We have a large, like I said, rural swaths of land out in the Snoqualmie Valley area. So I wanted to give a little history about the Economic Alliance in general, which is a larger program that's countywide and focuses on our urban unincorporated area. So areas outside of cities. A little history on DLS is that Department of Local Services only started in 2019 to really be the local government for areas outside of cities that don't have that local support of the city government. So that's, that's folks all around Duval that you probably see in the city center. So folks outside of city limits, that's really who we focus on serving. There's a number of urban unincorporated areas that we also work in, but the big, large rural swaths are the ones that we're targeting with this Economic Alliance work. So in 2020, our partners mostly in the urban unincorporated areas came together and said that we have been disproportionately impacted by COVID in these areas and that there needs to be a historic investment into the economies in these unincorporated areas to really rectify the damage done during the pandemic. And so from that, the county council started and gave an ordinance to start the unincorporated King County Economic Alliance. And that's how we really got tied to Rob and we're working with folks at the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber, Kelly over there. And our mission has been to be to center equitable and sustainable economic recovery from COVID-19 specifically on our most vulnerable and hardest hit community members across unincorporated areas. And the vision was to co-create pathways to economic recovery with those who are living in and doing business in those unincorporated areas who were hit hardest in the public health crisis. We really want to do this with a pro equity frame, framework, which you'll see is kind of infused in the MOU that, that we're presenting today. So the process of this is that King County Council appropriated around 5.25 of COVID recovery money to go into unincorporated areas to support the economic development. From that, we've collaborated, we have over sixty two members now in our Economic Alliance across the county. And these are both small business partners, these are economic development partners and chambers that are really invested in and really benefiting the recovery across unincorporated areas. Our program timeline is that we go through, from 2022 is when we started and we will end in 2024. Assuming nothing changes with the council, we don't get extended, but that's where we're at right now. And like I said, the partnership structure is, is what's happening right now and what, how we've all came to be is that it's local governments and chambers like ourselves partnering with community members and small business owners and then our community-based organizations that we are partnering with who really provide those services in community and tap into those resources that we need for our most vulnerable members. We have programming associated with it. We meet monthly, whether it's a subcommittee meeting, which is how this Snoqualmie Valley Economic Alliance MOU started, was a subcommittee of our Snow Valley partners saying that we really want to focus on economic recovery in the Snow Valley region. And then also we do bi-monthly meetings at every other month with a larger group of over sixty partners. And again, these alliance members really co-create pathways to recovery and, and really strengthen those business networks. We really want the support to be low barrier, meaning that it's not hard to access. We want people to know it's here and to be able to get involved and to have that high support resources that come with that. And we want it to be relationship based, we want to really know each other. We want to have actual relationships with the people in our communities so they feel seen and heard and able to actually get the help they need and not feel like it's a transactional experience. And we want it to be place-based. We know it's important to be in the communities that we're serving and not have it be something where we're asking someone, for example, from the Snow Valley to come all the way over to, to our urban areas of, of King County to, to get their business done. We want it to be in, in location. So that's where the Snoqualmie Economic Alliance really came to be, like I said, is from those subcommittees. And the, from that, we've been working together to pull in partners from the different cities to really create and co-convene, co-convene a group that would focus on innovation and economic development, specifically in the Snow Valley region. We came together again with Carnation, Duval, North Bend and Snoqualmie, the cities of those, as well as our department, the Department of Local Services, which again is all the areas in between that aren't in cities, that are outside of those small cities, to really promote some values, some economic development values that we can incorporate across the region. So like Rob was mentioning, the small business innovation grants from federal resources that really focus on rural communities, they require partnership agreements. They want to see that there's different communities collaborating across regions and across industries, which is where this MOU really targets our priorities and our partnerships, which would make us competitive for these rural innovation grants. This MOU hopefully will be signed again by our local organizations and CBO partners, community-based organization partners, as well as our cities, but we're of course starting with the cities and the unincorporated areas. So my department would sign on, which would really start us, get us a small foundation that we can go from and then sign on our other CBO partners. So this is kind of the meat of it, priorities that we've identified. And again, we've been meeting across the past year about every other month, if not monthly, to come up with these values. And they are spilled, spelled out in far more detail in the actual MOU, but these are some high level kind of takeaways of it. So first, we want to really honor the historic role of the Snoqualmie Valley, knowing that there's innovation that's been here for time memorial and wanting to honor that historic presence that's there. We want a healthy living through sustainability and green jobs. So knowing that climates are changing, that things are changing, we want to, any economic growth that happens is sustainable and able to really maintain over the course of time. Diversity is another priority. We know that the Snoqualmie Valley area and other rural areas across the region are changing. There's a lot of displacement that's happening in our urban unincorporated areas that's pushing folks out and displacing them into other areas of the county and through the cities. So we're recognizing that, there's some data in the MOU from Snoqualmie Valley Schools that, that shows this change. And we want to make sure that new folks who enter the Snoqualmie Valley region are also supported. Equity with that, again, knowing that no matter what the income that folks can thrive in the valley is one of the big priorities. We want to preserve that rural character, like Rob said. We know that folks in the valley love being where they're at, surrounded by trees and in these beautiful Pacific Northwest vistas. We want that to stay, so that will maintain as a value in the alliance. Economic empowerment and entrepreneurship are the other values, as well as curiosity and having a youth focus. So we are looking at prevention and making sure that our young people are engaged in high wage careers or living out their entrepreneurial dreams if that's what they choose. We also recognize the importance of infrastructure improvements, specifically across the state route two oh two, two oh three corridor that impacts the entire Snoqualmie Valley region. Also, we really want to preserve and support local businesses to avoid displacement further from our Snoqualmie Valley areas and the business districts here. So those are the main values and priorities that we've identified and that we're hoping to maintain as through lines as we continue organizing and working together. Some big things to note is that this MOU does not require any finances or costs. We're not asking for any money from any of the cities. We're really just outlining, again, those priorities, those values and the intention to collaborate, the intention to work together, to form an alliance that really benefits all of us mutually. And of course, the residents and businesses in these areas. Also, yeah, I already mentioned this, that it's really was developed by partners across the region, including community-based organizations, we are working with Empower Youth and, like I said, the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber of Commerce, to really identify what priorities are and how we want to move forward. So our timeline is, we are right in November now, so we've been presenting to cities across the area. We've already presented at Snoqualmie Valley Chamber, excuse me, in the city of Snoqualmie, North Bend and now Duval. We plan to meet with the city of Carnation in the next couple of weeks and we are also reaching out to the Snoqualmie Valley Tribe. We hope that the city councils will move for signature and adoption of the MOU in December is our goal. And then that will allow us to really move forward with any funding opportunities that come, come to light in the new year and allow us to continue that organizing work to really support small businesses and, and the workforce across the region. So some of the ideas again is to apply for that grant funding and really just be able to cross collaborate across the region to really promote economic development. So, yeah, oh, I didn't mention this and Rob kind of did, is that we're in collaboration with the King County Creative Economies and green job strategies. So that's where the creative, the green jobs priority comes in, is there's a whole strategy that's far deep and developed with the county that we're kind of coming alongside, that's really valuing those high wage jobs in industries that benefit our environment. And then the creative economy is actually a newer kind of department that's forming and it's, it's really again, like Rob said, about the film and arts industries and having that be a new sector that really can be brought out to these areas. So those are the two strategies we're aligning with at the county as well. Any questions as we threw a lot at you?
Angelie, if I may, just open here. Point of clarification, we're working with all three chambers. So it's Snow Valley, it's, it's Duval and Carnation Chamber of Commerce. Snow Valley Innovation Center is, is one organization that's the umbrella that all this is fitting under because we intend to serve the whole valley, including, we do Snow Valley jobs for. We have about eighty-five hundred people, unique visitors this year looking at jobs from over a hundred employers across the valley, primarily it's, it's been the, the upper valley, but we'd also like to include this area. But it's just some of the demonstration that we're working on.
Oh, okay, yeah, now, a quick question. Where, where, what did the tribes put in this timeline? Was that the November where they would sign the MOU?
Yep, we're presenting now in November. Like I said, we should be finished with all of our presentations by the end of November and we're hoping to incorporate any feedback we receive from any city and then go for signature in December.
But I, I believe council member Shaver, sorry. Is, his point is where, where does the tribe, Snoqualmie tribe?
Oh, excuse me, I missed that.
Yeah, my, my concern, I guess, my, my, my thought is they should at least be treated, and I don't know what the grants require, so that may, it may strictly be focused on, on cities. But the, the tribe should be treated, I guess, as an, you know, equal partner to the cities to sign on.
Absolutely, we're actually scheduled to meet with the tribe, I believe, December fifteenth. So we want to get the cities lined up first and then tomorrow, actually, we're meeting to figure out how to integrate the tribe as an equal partner to the four cities. And we're also, we're also going to reach out to the city of Skankamish too, because they often get forgotten. You have to go up into Snohomish and then come back into King County. So we were talking about that today, so there's still bits and pieces we need to get together.
Sure, I, I understand that. The, the very small concern I would have with, with that would be, well, a lot of the tribes has, has concerns or issues with this that we wouldn't be aware of. I haven't, I, so we'd sign on to the MOU, but then the tribe would say, oh, but have you guys thought about this problem? Or, or this type of thing. And I, I say it's a small issue because I think that's unlikely there would be any major, you know, disagreement from, from the trial, tribal side, but but it did, did occur to me, occur to me as we go on this, because we're doing cities first and then other organizations and tribes later.
Right, right.
And I said, you gotta do something, right? So like I said, it's a very small, that's sort of my thought.
I, I, I think you're right though on being equal.
Yeah, and we, we had talked about this, like Rob was mentioning, I think we're gonna strategize a little bit more tomorrow because we don't want that to happen either, where the tribe, you know, we want them to be an equal partner and then we have them come in after everyone's signed and there's no room for edits. So I think that's something that we're gonna talk through and figure out how we can work around. There is a, a little bit of a timeline that we're trying to keep to, but I think that it's important to get their feedback before we all go through, for signatures. So, yeah, we're definitely strategizing around that.
I was just gonna add, we're gonna bring forward the MOU at the December fifth meeting and hopefully by then we figure out the tribe piece of it, make sure it's incorporated in the MOU. So when I do the agenda bill and MOU, I'll bring in that date and I'll make sure and work with the bigger group. I'm hoping that we can have it wrapped up on the fifth morning because we don't always have a second meeting in December. And so if we can't have it in the first meeting, then it might be the first meeting in January. But I think, I think we'll get there before the fifth. So they're going to ask for a, I'm thrilled about this idea. It's something I think that we talked about, that the chambers, it'd be great if the chambers were together. But honestly, the cities, the county, if we all get together, super exciting. I wrote myself some questions and then one was, have you contacted the Duval Chamber? It sounds like we have.
We have, and, and Director Thomas has been involved in that as well.
I know, it's interesting. They have not responded to the email yet. But I will reach out to them again if they're busy planning for some new area. They just kicked off, they just came off the trick or treat and then, yeah.
Okay, and then my other question was, we're pretty far north here from your core cities and areas. And I just wanted to know, it sounds like you thought potentially there could be some programming in the Duval area or further north of the valley.
Absolutely, we just have to figure out what it is.
Exactly, yeah. But the intent is that there would be programs or whatever comes out of this throughout the valley would just be centrally localized in Snoqualmie, North Bend.
Right, right. And again, North Bend, the anomaly is North Bend was the only address out of the valley that fit into this RISE program, even though the farms are out here.
Right.
It's so, it's like, okay, well, we'll figure out how to make it work into your point, no, sorry. To your point is, this is one of those things where if you and Skankamish and Carnation decide we're going to come together, we have the framework for it to happen. So it's not mutually exclusive or something that you have to do totally across the footprint. But it's a way that we can all support one another, we'll go after grants. We can do it as a group rather than individually, hopefully we'll have more success.
Yeah, and also we hoped it would benefit individually as well. So if any individual city or entity wanted to go out for funding and, you know, just show that they have great partnerships and here's, you know, a proof of that, that would hopefully benefit them individually as well as we could go in on, you know, potential funding sources together, like the RISE grant requires that, right? So hopefully it would provide lots of opportunities in multiple different ways.
Yeah, the role of the Innovation Center, is that the physical place or better virtual organization?
So it's, it's actually a physical place. It's home there, Unqaa Bank in North Bend, I have this extra space that the bank has allowed us to use. So we do have a home, we meet weekly for the innovation prize. So if you have entrepreneurs that are willing, that are wanting a group to join, we can join virtually or they can join in person. And the other intent is that we're looking at other models where we could fill in the gap for the cities and somebody that's interested in opening a business, how do we go through, you know, through that process? And rather than put the onus on, on city staff to take care of that, we're going to reconfigure our, our website so that there is a portal that you can put on your, your, your own city website and people can go through that and, and figure out how, what they need to do in their next steps and how.
And when we talk about something like that on Duval's website, something similar to that.
My quick question would be that, so you mentioned some monthly meetings that happened as you were gathering feedback and stuff. Is that something that would continue forward? So I'm just trying to mentally know, are we gonna need to have like an elected official or a staff member regularly attend check-ins or anything like that, or do you think a lot of it's gonna be like emails and other type communication?
No, I want to be sensitive from the city standpoint, because I know how many commissions and, and council invests that we have. Putting one more thing on it is just onerous and nobody knows that better than Mayor Ockerlander. So we don't want to name it, but maybe there's a way of checking in and, and it, it may be through the community development directors at their discretion, but we've got a lot of, we don't, we just want to be there to hook support rather than to be a burden on staff and resources.
Yeah, I think that it would be, it'd be awesome if we met on a regular basis, maybe if that, if that's quarterly or, or, or monthly or, or something, but just to stay connected and, and to, to keep that collaboration point. But, but like Rob said, I don't think it needs to be, we don't want it to be onerous or extra. We want it to be productive and feel good for everyone and not be something that's an obligation, that's not doing anything. So I think we would meet as needed, but, but obviously, you know, if we were going after funding, there might be a few extra touchpoints that we'd need to have or something like that. But, yeah, minimally, minimally invasive for you all and hopefully, yeah, would be good.
It's just one of those things, or even if we're excited, I want to make sure what's the timing and then, even if there's no cost or anything like that. I want to make sure that we can have, you know, someone to that. Did I say another game? Yeah, ooh, oh, oh, go ahead.
I'm remembering an SBDA meeting, I'm on a meeting two years ago, that someone from the report was there talking about another economic development type initiative where they wanted to have a VA bond to help with business development potentially. Do you remember that?
There's another group, it's called Startup Four Two Five. And we have reached out to them about collaborating and I've got somebody from my innovation board working with them that I haven't heard an update on where we're at.
Okay.
We'd like to get hooked in to, you know, resources that are already there.
Yeah, so I think the report was really excited, they just needed to figure out, you know, how to make it work, so.
And I may need to circle back with Samantha's thing.
Or the tattoo that's, you see who the plant person was for that program?
Right, okay, that would be really good. One other thing is, you may remember Saber Snoqualmie Valley from Bounce Shit Sound. And I was talking with them today and they're going to be in our meeting tomorrow, I believe, as well. But they're interested in, in helping us, you know, basically with that collateral they've already developed is kind of the, another piece of this alliance. I'm going, what was Saber Shit Sound? Well, it was an effort, they, they had a bunch of maps and they were trying to get. Going forward, what was Saber Shit Sound? Well, it was an effort, they, they had a bunch of maps and they were trying to get. People to um, give a part of the table sort of arrangement and, and to, to. Uh, encourage eco tourism in the valley. And they didn't wanna carry it on themselves going forward. They were hoping for another organization to do that for them. And uh, that may be a possibility.
We partnered with them on the Port of Seattle grants and so a lot of um. A lot of the information that we have is the QR codes that are, uh, you know, for some of our artwork. Um, our maps by them, we have some videos as well by them that have been created. But when we were applying for grants this year, they were pulling, essentially pulling out a little bit. And we're like, we can't answer this anymore. And so we're having to relook at that in this next year. We don't have that partner anymore in the same way.
Other questions? Well, did you have anything else to add or is that?
Yeah, it did. I'm just, you have any questions and we um, carry forward the MOU for you in consideration. Angelina, anything else that you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Thanks for having us today and I, you know, just happy to share with you about just the Economic Alliance work in gen- general. And then the possibility of having a really special Snohomie Valley Alliance feels, feels important and it feels like. Uh, you know, like, like someone was saying, I forget who in the room said it, but it's, it's really cool to see that cross-county, city and. Tribe as well as community partners and, and um, nonprofit organizations. I mean, that's pretty substantial. So if we can, if we can make this happen, I think it would be a really cool thing for the entire region.
Well, thank you both so much for coming and giving us all this information and it sounds like I am hearing excitement, so we'll see how, how this works.
And reach out to us if we can be of further assistance. We definitely want to do things here at Duvall. And that would be an awesome opportunity for us to, right? And one other thing, I was just marked with splendor coming into the town in the middle of lights. It was so inviting, so. That you didn't have the chance to, Angelina.
I missed out Christmas early. That sounds nice.
I think.
Yeah, thank you again. Have a nice night. Thank you, Rob and Susan Martin.
Thank you both. Take care.
Watch out for your, yeah, thank you. Good luck tonight, especially notes about that post.
Yeah, all right, so with that, um, our last item is a closed session, discussion on collective bargaining under R C W forty-two dot. Thirty dot one forty-four A. And with that, do we wanna go downstairs then? Yes, do I have to say for how long? I didn't see a word that mattered. How, um, closed session, it doesn't, you don't have any roles for announcement? I don't know that we'll take the entire company, but we'll see.
We're back from the session, we still have a little extra time, we're gonna go ahead and get our city administrator report.
We'll start.
Right, and next slide please. And just a reminder that we have light up you all coming on December 1. And just a reminder that we have light up Duvall coming on December first. We're still working on getting vendors to come, but we've got some some folks already signed up, so pretty excited. At least three, we sent out another email today to the kind of small business maker community vendors in a wider array of vendors. So we reached out to Timor-Bottle Monroe today as well as for Lee Manny, hoping that we can draw on more of a Christmas market flavor, so more on that. But we're excited about expanding light up Duvall to have more opportunities and just kind of pick up the events a little bit.
Right.
And Laura and I will be in a pop-up tent, trying to get folks to sign up for the Park Trails and Open Space and Pop Plan. Participate if any elected wants to join us in that tent. I wanted to put it in here to offer the opportunity. And then last, last meeting, we were talking about the Art Wine Lock that is going back. I just wanted to update council that the tentative date for that is gonna be September 7th, 2024, so right after December. And our community events coordinator, Rudy Murray, now is pretty involved in that right now and getting everything set up. So it, the, you know, bringing back that exciting event. And they're, they're pretty well deep into the planning, so I think it's, I think it's gonna go. And we should anticipate an economic development grant application likely for 2024. And next slide, I'm gonna turn over the next few slides to Director Thomas.
So good evening, Mayor Council and members of our community. This is just, we're calling it our dash, our dashboard. It looks a little bit better than just throwing up our typical bullet points. You'll also get a copy in your next council packet, that'll be September, October report. But we are definitely continuing to track pretty well, I think, for permits and inspections. We've obviously been working a lot on budget the last several weeks, and so that's taken up a bit of time within our community. I would say that, you know, this year has been a high, high year. It's, we're gonna be about 150 by the end of the year, so that's still record-breaking for us. But it's not as high as we thought, because we have some permit there still under. Next slide. This is just the October dashboard. So you can see we're continuing to trend in inspections and permits. And part of that budget process is we have to make year estimates. And so we've done that work, we've worked internally, and we communicate with our development community as well to see how many are gonna pick up by the end of the year and how many do they project for the next year. So we have completed that portion of the work. Next slide. This is just the long range planning slide, so the survey was mailed out. And I heard from the council member already, and heard from the staff member already. And we received our first paper copy today in the mail at City Hall. So if you got one, please fill it out. We will be bringing the public participation plan to City Council on 12/5 along with the Pop Plan, Public Participation Plan as well. We are tracking pretty well. We are staying on task, which is always a good thing, and staying timely to our consultants. But that's important to us, and it's important to our consultant. A couple little miscellaneous ones, we are preparing for the pop-up tent, because that does take quite a bit of work to create a tent and put information and have good dialogue with the community. And council member, or sorry, city, I'm forgetting that, I'm tired, the time changed. Our city administrators, Sam Kim McNabb and I, met with the owner of Duell Village Commercial Parcel. So stay tuned, and we'll probably report back on that here in the coming month or so. We have our draft sign code is under review with the city attorney. It's about 30 pages, so we've given them two weeks to take a look at it. We're doing our first presentation tomorrow, which is kind of just an opening conversation and the pieces and parts that we're looking at changing, which is really just the content neutral language and a couple of other small pieces. And we expect to have a presentation on 12/5 with City Council. We won't necessarily have the draft language yet, it'll be higher, you know, it can be bigger picture to tell you what pieces that we have to change. So that will be coming. And that's it. Thank you.
And then I'll pass over to the next slide to, next couple of slides for Public Works Director, Director Lanzowski.
All right, yeah, well, evening everyone, Steve Lanzowski, Public Works. So toll-two wiring replacement project is finally up to bid. Boy, COVID 2020, we started on that, had a lot of issues. We worked it all out, so we are moving forward. A bit of things on the 16th, we speak in the contract about starting in spring, so we're getting things lined up. Their team contracted Reddard, it is 2000, you keep a pipe going from Big Rock and 275 through the PC corridor all the way to the full pipeline. Good news is there's not a lot of reparations for hard surface, just undeveloped brush, we're crossing line three, so we're gonna direct to a bore of HDP, I miss the polyethylene pipe. You push and drag, it'll be pretty people over the creek. Engineering is 1.0 to 1.2 in our long-term CIP, I believe that was a 1.8. So interesting. I'm level 15, myself and the fellow curators of the New Castle are presenting at the All-County Operations Meeting. So they asked us to share challenges and operational insights for preparation for small emergencies. So fun. Economic segments, we're working on some of those things that the subcommittee talked to city administration now about. So we're getting into a small contractor of KPG. So I'm asked to do the manifold for Big Rock, we didn't need a PSC already to talk about charging stations at a car park. So hope, hope to have a number of renewed electrician as well. One issue just for fun is with the charging stations, you typically need a partner. Because we don't own power, so they have nice and easy ways to charge folks who use power at those, those charging stations. So we'll, we're looking at that. One of the two new UV systems is operational at the tree plant. All systems being verified by the end of the week. And then, so there's a new one running and an old one still in operation, because it's a dual redundant system. If that passes through the weekend, then it will turn the whole one off and install the other UV. Early in the week. They're doing well. The remodel is going well, second floor is in, there's some images on the next page. The truck on your left is the new F550 delivery of this last week. $100 budgeted, that is a pneumatic dump bed, it's a four-by-four, 550. And we'll have a plow on the front, it will not be a sanding or deasing unit, just because we decided that really destroys the trucks, so we're gonna keep that one. A rock three fall. So anyway, it's a big name, oh, and we fell under our budgets. And the plow setup is yet to be deployed, but that's next, that next slide. Just a brief notice, we are still in our advisory stage for the record. Good news is daily consumption is slowly getting to the target of 100, oh, the 100 million dollars daily for a whole four. The rain is helping fill the reservoir, but no matter where rains, it has to rain in the reservoir area, which is just about does not matter what it rains, too many just needs to get down, so just remember that. But we are turning up over to see in the bottom left, but the top left graph is a green line, which is current stored volumes, and it has a, this week, my slide. And then just a couple images, so the whole one is hard to understand, that's on the last, again, Big Rock Road to the pole going through the PC power corridor. The UD unit on the right, top screen, in operation at the tree plants. And so the violet is our third, 13 years level improvement before we just start the river. And then that remodel is where you would be coming up there in our old facility and looking through a wall. Now the floor is there that goes all the way across the old drive, so moving along just fine. Change work wise, lots of things we all building. We are, change work issued at about 12,000. There's a list about 50,000 long that we're going through, and that already was around one because of the technical situation that we weren't sure what we were gonna cover. So a lot of the funding they have found, being reasonable, oh, and the 40 years of GTE Verizon and everybody else's telephone wires in the back of the building were removed yesterday. And that's by the way, that's City Bucks, one of the 40ers still. So they're back toward each other. And I'm done. Next slide. Definitely.
Just final piece slide, and we'll pick up on the final two bullet points in the regular meeting. So I'll just cover on November 9th, for having your staff trading day. And I wanted to share with council that we reached out to the community to ask if they were interested in having us do service projects. And we paired employees with three different organizations. On Thursday afternoon, the Kari Network, there's a group of us that are going to build our paths for kids. A couple people are going to Bullseye Academy to power wash their playground equipment. And then we're helping out the Duvall historicals. You know, it's a last-minute thing this year to put this together, but I'm hoping it speeds an opportunity to do an event like this next year with a long-term planning and notice. And I'm still really excited about participation this year, and we'll see how it goes. But it would be great if it could kind of seed something like this that we do every year for our community.
And were you gonna email council about potentially helping with that too, or not this year?
So it kind of came together in a somewhat disorganized fashion. So what I would like to do is kind of seed it this year, and then next year have it be a far more organized. So we actually, we kind of did a cutoff on accepting projects in from our community. We had waited a week, and then as soon as we said, okay, well, we need to start matching employees, we got three more groups that wanted service projects, but we hadn't gotten enough employees we could match. So it's, you know, smaller this year, but hopefully again, the foundation for a bigger project next year. And we have a lot of community members and community organizations who are excited about other things. So I'll report back and kind of share, share our experience, that we're excited about it. And then, because we only have a few more minutes, the other two will come back to when we have that meeting done. All right, sounds good. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the, the whole meeting at 6:57 and be back in a few minutes to start the council meeting.
I did, no.
Um Mayor Oldlander.
Here.
Mayor Pretend McHenry.
Here.
Mister Essexen. Mister Shaker.
Here.
Uh Mister Mercer, here. Mister Soffler, here. Miss Knopf.
Here.
Mister Lovett.
Not a core. Alright, are there any additions or corrections of the evening's agenda? I'd like to move to use council member Lovett and I've seen any injunctions? Very good, thank you. Any other additions or corrections? Seeing that we never want to occur this evening's council agenda, so. All those in favor, please say hi.
I'm fine.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we'll move on to presentations. Um this evening, I am, we are privileged to have Dr. Eric Murray, president of Cascadia College here. Uh to provide a presentation on the state of the college, the Cascadier Roadshow. Um so Dr. Murray.
Or do I say it?
You welcome to come to the podium. Uh will you be able to see your presentation or?
Yes, I'll pulling it up in a second.
Okay, great. And then uh just a side note, I also have the privilege of being on the leadership beside of four of Dr. Murray. Um and I've had the privilege of knowing him for several years now, and so thrilled to have him here.
So thank you.
Yeah, good thing. One second.
Well, I'll give a little introduction before you work on that. Thank you. Uh my name is Eric Murray, and if you're not aware, Cascadia College located in Bothell has a service district that encompasses North Forest School District. Lake Washington School District and River View School District, which means that the city of Duval is in our service area. And I will say that I've been the Cascadia president for fourteen years now. This is the first time I've come to the city, so it's for them, state of the college. The reason for that is largely because of the relationship that I developed with the mayor. Uh through leadership Eastside and now post pandemic. Uh it's been really important to me to make sure that all of the cities that we represent know. A little bit more about the community college that serves you, how we interact with you. The state of the college, our fiscal and enrollment help, and it's time that we embrace Duval. So I take ownership um for not having been here earlier and want to make sure that we really extend and welcome the city into our service area. I will say however, that we I've been involved with River View School District since the time I did the N B C P and I did a lot of work together. And here's where we've super tenet, and I've now been working uh right side by side with Susan Lee. And it's going really well. We are starting to see an increase in river and Cedar Crest students. Uh at Cascadia College. So this is a a few minute presentations that are eight minutes and then we'll open up questions in a few seconds. So I I call it the roadshow because I I go to sixty schools and three schools, which gets rid of this between November and January. And so it's my roadshow. And what we want to talk about next is uh our success rate next. I said uh something recently and they told me I couldn't say next, so I had to come up with a different word. It's been like go. Uh four things I want to talk about today, student success, equity, access and progress next. So next. You may not know, but Cascadia is probably one of the best performing community colleges in the entire state of Washington. There are thirty-four community colleges. We have the highest percentage of students who transfer to a four-year university. We were designed that way. We were meant to be a transfer institution. After uh college earnings for Cascadia students are generally nine percent higher. That's based on state data when they interview graduates programs. And then also our business graduates, about sixteen thousand more than our I T graduates, about eleven plus. We also measure our success on other student metrics, including the fact that we have the highest academic transfer rate to the University of Washington. That's by design. We're sitting there right there on campus, and so our students are exposed to university environment and transfer easily. We've seen year after year increases in student retention. Uh we have the highest percentage of getting students college math and college English ready. A lot of students graduating from high school not being ready for those classes. And we are the number one producer of students to migrate to the college level. And nationwide, retention rate for students at a community college is about forty-nine percent. Last year was ninety-three percent at Cascadia. That means students who started with us and then call upon your students to follow the same. So that is a the high end of success for our students. We also pride ourselves in our success on how we think about equity inclusion. Thanks. One of the programs that's been a a three-year endeavor for us and it's just growing is Cascadia scholars. We take students from marginalized and historically underrepresented groups and we pair them with a mentor. Each mentor has four students and we started out with sixteen students in year one, jumped to fifty-three. Now I have over a hundred students in this. Which means we have twenty-five mentors working actively right now. These are faculty and staff who volunteer their time to help make sure students are successful. And you can come from any marginalized background or historically underrepresented or protected group to be in this program. Next. Well, by the way, those Cascadia scholars students have a higher retention rate than the students who aren't in the program. So we know that the mentoring is actually working to keep them engaged and higher head. We also have something called our Equity Inclusion Foundations course that was developed by us and we have all of our employees go through it seven months. It's once uh once a month for seven months with some reading and some homework. And it talks about what it means to be an equity, an equity focused and inclusive place. And it's been so popular that the rest of the community technical college system has asked for it. Uh leadership Eastside, we're helping to coach them, lots similar to the King County Library System has asked us if they can participate in. So we are offering courses for any civic entities who want to participate in that. We offer student color conferences. Third year, we have over six hundred students of color set foot on Cascadia's campus. And we have a high number of those actually end up applying to us. And that includes uh Cedar Crest. We had last year forty students from high school come and visit us. And they were, it was very popular. They want to come back and that's also what uh. Uh we've had a couple of school district folks participate in our E nine course and it's expanding. That relationship is growing stronger. And we've increased our, more than triple our staff in that division. Next. Access mean how easy is it for students to get to us? Next. We have this program statewide, actually it's nationwide, it's called guided pathways. We now have meta majors. You don't have to choose from thirty-three majors. You choose one of seven meta majors. And when you take that meta major, you get all of your general requirements that will prepare you for any of the majors within that set. So you can think of it like an umbrella program. All we have to do is get students into the umbrella program. And then advise them well, and once they get there and get their requirements done, they see that they can actually succeed when it hits their most specific major of the university. And so guided pathways has been successful, much more than launched us. Uh helps increase students' retention. Next. The city of Kenmore gave us a grant this year to open up what we call or calling was the Kenmore Academy, now the Cascadian Academy. They realized that students in the high school that's in their sitting part of North Shore School District are coming underprepared in math and English to college because of the pandemic. Those two units stepping out really took a toll on the achievement rates of students. And so they gave us money to start a Tuesday children's program to help any high school senior or junior. Get back up to speed uh in English and math, so they were better prepared when they entered college. We hope to expand that to other high schools, but obviously we thought they could do to me. And then something which I think is specifically important to Duval and River View School District is the Renton Together Center. You may be aware of this twenty nonprofit gathering built underneath five stories of affordable housing in downtown Renton. Cascadia has a classroom there and we're offering running start classes as well as English and the second language classes. Uh to anybody who wants to come to that. Why it's important for Duval or or River View is you have students at your high school who are taking running start courses, getting college credit. And they're driving all the way to Bell. We're driving all the way to Bell. And this cuts that distance down. And so they can take uh uh right now, we have nine courses there. We're granting up to fifteen courses next quarter. They can take back to back courses and they can, the school district pays the community college for that tuition. And the student gets then free, so to speak, higher education for those classes count for dual credit for high school and for college credit. And this is the first semester quarter that we've offered it and uh it's just paying them speed. And so we're hoping that the comparison with the Duval community by having that closer to this location. Next. Growth, next. We are excited that next week on Thursday, we are opening an eighty million dollar new building called Innovation Hall. U Dub and Cascadia came together to offer a science, technology, engineering, math building. We put our combined funds into one bucket. So that we go over the joint building so that community college students are learning right next to university students. That our faculty are interacting, that the upper level students are mentoring the lower level students. And this new eighty million dollar building uh has been supported by a lot of folks around the state. Uh mostly by the state legislature and we're excited because it really exemplifies the relationship that Cascadia has with the university system. And then in two years, we break ground. I was called the gateway building. It's a forty million dollar building that accesses our student services center. So as soon as students park and walk across the street, they're right in the middle of our student services home, so we can help them better get into Cascadia. Next. One last fast, I'll add, the pandemic really hurts. We were down in enrollment forty-five percent. And we were relying on stimulus money and our reserves to make it through the pandemic. That's turned around. Uh we're not back up to full speed yet, but we have enough increase in enrollment this quarter. That we are not giving in to reserves to make pair bills. Uh in fact, we have to find higher additional staff as well. So what was a a moment in time that really pushed a lot of people wanting to leave the college is. Now we're able to solve to me, they do, they just need a time to get confidence in our system and start coming back to class. In-person classes, no equipment, online classes right now. And so we have about a seventy, thirty in-person to online. That's how much folks have stepped away from the online environment and back into the in-person environment. So we are there to to serve all of these communities and these students. And I thought it was important that you're seeing council were aware of all of this, just for general knowledge and maybe that you could do to steer people from this. But thank you. I'll have to answer questions if I have a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. It's um definitely impressive what you've done uh at Cascadia, especially those things. Um to see those numbers. It's one thing to talk about, to see them on the screen is uh much more impactful. So congratulations on all of that hard work of you and your team. Um council, do you have any questions for Dr. Murray? Uh Councilor Shaker.
The tuition in college costs, you know, as we're all painfully aware, uh this puts uh. Higher education just, you know, outreach for so many, so many people, so many people would 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 highly benefit or. Uh how, what 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 does Cascadia do in in that, in that regard as far as, you know, s- uh scholarships, grants? You know, that type of thing that may help, may help.
Good question. Thank you. Tuition at the college for a full year is forty-five hundred dollars. And if you go to U Dub, it's fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so right there is a new instant deal, so to speak, a lot of our students can struggle with forty-five hundred dollars. We have a foundation, a fundraising foundation that has an amount right now of about two million dollars. And we help, we have about a thousand students at the beginning of each year and we uh threw scholarship funds, two hundred of them in our first quarter. So what's the um it it uh thing that they have to apply for. But if a student doesn't know, like, let's say you're a high school senior, you don't know in May it's necessarily applied for scholarship. So we run another cycle in October, um just finishing up so that students who just arrived, let's realize that we can pay for them. And have money to give to them. We also have financial aid programs and we are one of the most underutilized financial aid uh colleges. We wish more people would apply for it. We have more money to give away. Even during the pandemic, we, our foundation pulled out fifty thousand dollars. Just wanted to give it away. You couldn't. We had nobody take that away, and I'm not sure why.
Hmm.
Um but we have financial aid, we have scholarships, we have a low cost. For our high school students, we pay for books, if you're on the running start program. We have parking assistance because you have to pay quite a few ar- efforts and so we have a program to comply with parking. Uh those are the things that we're doing right now. We would love to make it more expensive for the other.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Councilor.
And then uh I just had sort of a a question regarding the new STEM building, which in and of itself, you know, we'd love to see. Partnerships, public, private, but also, you know, that's an important, you've been down when you think Cascadia partnered. I think you mentioned in the beginning that Cascadia um. Uh we don't want to use the word here, but there is a sort of a pathway of you being a four-year institution. I was just curious to comment a little bit on how that came about because obviously. U Dub, you know, Bothell's a a theater even into the main Seattle campus, but they have it in the same place. I think you both create the opportunity, but you also, you know, have an opportunity to build relationships with UW staff and. Excited to to maybe want to transfer to the University of Washington.
You know, when we were created, we opened the doors in two thousand on this joint campus. That's twenty-three years ago. And U Dub didn't want that. Uh they thought that it tarnished their identity. And for when I was hired uh in twenty-ten, the first thing my boardroom board said to me is build this relationship with U Dub. We're here for a reason and the legislature wants us here to partner. And I can tell you the turning point in that relationship of making it work was when U Dub president Paul Marca said she came into the program. About six or seven years ago. She fully believes that the community college system is integral to the success of the University of Washington. Nobody before her believed that. And uh about forty to forty-five percent of students at U Dub were transfers. And so she realized how important that relationship was and she told her subordinate, the chancellor, U Dub Bothell, make this work. And so six or seven years ago, things started turning around. We started building these academic pathways. We started thinking how we could leverage each other rather than push each other away. Um we started making sure our advisors were working together and our faculty had opportunities to talk. Our student government spoke the new student union building that they, the students paid for it, Cascadia and U Dub students, and they put their student government offices together. Because they felt that that's important, this relationship was between, I don't get the response to talking about it, but.
Cool.
Um because no relation with this kind of relationship exists. And it was, I think the legislature was trying to save money back in the nineteen nineties. Because it isn't a statute that we ha- have to work together on academics. It's in statute that we have to work together to save money on services. Uh facilities and custodial on buildings and that kind of thing. But the byproduct of that is we've become the best transfer community college in the entire state. I think it's, it's absolutely due to that relationship. So it turned around six or seven years ago and this building can't be any better of a hallmark of that relationship. Thank you.
So I uh stood on the St. Paul Valley Transportation Coalition, our mobility coalition we should start. And we talk a lot about uh things that the community can learn by attending college. Have a uh or about college and I think that there are big bus um that I was supposed that you'll take. Students from Duval, anyone from Duval that's been at some place.
I also go to Renton Transit Center, just how the students get along with the track and so we're right down.
That's true. Yeah, that too. But um I don't think right now um. The frequencies, the buses, different things like that, it's not really a viable situation. So anyway, I don't know how much um. You talk to Dr. Leach or advocate or uh, because I know we're advocating with uh Metro. Just to get.
Well, I see this scoreboard next to it in my meeting, so I can.
Yeah, I think it'd be amazing. We do talk a lot about um the access. Um if you don't have a car. It's really hard and uh or a parent that can drive you back and forth and so it ends up being. An equity situation. I certainly get access to community college and.
When I first got here, I asked my stakeboard, could I take, could I take a Cedar Crest. Um classroom and turn it into a running start classroom after hours.
That would be amazing. What? Really?
Um because classes have to be open for anyone who wants to enroll and. And I can't make it specifically about the high school students. So we have to have open access. The school district can have a sponsor. They have to be there, open, close the doors, blah, 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 blah. Um so if I try bringing it right start here, so the closest I could get that now. But transportation is absolutely huge. Cascadia is a transit hub for sound transit, metro and uh maybe transit. Or wonder if it'd be busted every day coming to the beginning of last year.
Duval, it should be my number. Yeah.
I'll keep that in mind and see what I.
Yeah, it'd be exciting. Exciting if you not get up and running. I have one more kid that won over in high school. My first two are already home.
You know, Duval as it grows is an untapped population for, especially for um. More marginalized students who who live out here and when they don't have accents, then how do we help them get their names to do? Sounds definitely on my.
Thank you for coming.
You've been lovely. And I can't wait to be invited to come if you're.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah.
You better know.
Well, we've got proclamation next, but uh Laura said um this would uh Perry Denver has stepped out, so I think we'll. We're going to go ahead and we'll do it. Are you sure? Okay, geez. Alright, um so we'll go ahead and start with kindness. Proclamation, I want to be directed by her and Laura then asked her to sit and so that must not all the objections. But we'll let him have our.
Uh proclamation. Whereas the city of Duval honors those, no matter how young or old, that make a positive difference in our community and our world and. Whereas Empower Youth Network's Youth Suicide Prevention Program, which includes the hashtag be kind as be campaign. Makes our schools, communities and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And whereas any day, week or month, is an excellent time to remind all of us of the need. To remember that compassion, empathy, humility and respect are essential ingredients. Of the creation and maintenance of a kind and civilized so- uh society. And whereas kindness is a fundamental part of the human condition. Which bridges the divides of race, religion, politics and gender. And whereas by knowing, understanding and using our power of kindness. We can send out a positive ripple that may travel throughout the valley and beyond. And whereas fostering acts of kindness within our community. We help our citizens develop a thoughtful foundation and perspective within themselves and those around them. And whereas through simple acts of kindness, we can promote healthy behaviors. And positive dynamics within our community. And whereas we seek to cultivate caring, kindness and compassion within our community. Now therefore, I, A New York Lander Mayor of the City of Duval. Proclaim November twenty twenty-three as Kindness Month in the City of Duval and recognize World Kindness Day on November thir- thirteenth of each year. Signed by the mayor. and recognize World Kindness Day on November thirteenth of each year, signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Oh, sure. And does council want to join? Sure. Way to go, yes, person. Way to go.
Did you all that?
Yeah, sure.
You want everybody to help them.
Everyone on this council, and if, I'm gonna, I'm sure. But I, uh, it's my personal, I have to, it's a room for you.
Most of these are your life.
For sure. Alright. I'll take one more. Handling with our multiple angles. Angle culture on there. What's that?
Hi, I am Heather Young, and I'm with Empower Youth Network. I am the program manager for our youth elementary program.
And I'm Christine Wiles, and I am the, I'm thirty hours in London Jackson's program.
I would just like to thank you for your continued commitment to human services. As part of our comprehensive suicide prevention efforts, Kindness Month is a foundational piece of our hashtag Be Kind S V school and community climate programming, designed to support the development of empathy and belonging. This coupled with our fifth to eighth grade How to Help a Friend program and our youth mental health first aid training, work together to prevent tragedy in our communities. Thank you so much for recognizing these efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and that's proclamation, it's made of American hurt.
Proclamation, whereas the United States of America is built upon diverse, upon a diverse history of cultures, and Native Americans have made significant contributions to the history, culture, and heritage of our nation. And whereas Native American Heritage Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the vibrant and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of Native Americans. And whereas Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity for all Americans to learn about and acknowledge the invaluable contributions of Native Americans to the fabric of our nation. And whereas Native American communities have a deep connection to the land, which is the foundation of their unique traditions and heritage. And whereas Native Americans have been resilient in the face of historical injustices and have played an essential role in the development and growth of our nation. And whereas the traditions, languages, and spiritual practices of Native American communities are vital aspects of our nation's cul- cultural mosaic, and we must honor and respect them. Whereas this month, we may, we aim to foster greater understanding and appreciation of Native American history, culture, and contributions among all Americans. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, will hereby proclaim and declare that Novem- one, November twenty twenty-three shall be recognized as Native American Heritage Month. Two, we encourage all citizens to learn about and honor the rich heritage, traditions, and contributions of Native Americans. Three, we acknowledge the importance of preserving and promoting Native American languages, cultures, and traditions. Four, we celebrate the diverse cultures and histories of Native American communities and their enduring contributions to our societies. Five, we express our gratitude, our gratitude to the valuable contributions of Native Americans in all aspects of American life. Signed by the mayor.
And last of our proclamations this evening is Veterans Day.
Proclamation, whereas the United States of America has a long and storied history of bravery, sacrifice, and commitment to liberty. And whereas our nation has been safeguarded by generations of, of selfless individuals who are ans- who have answered the call to duty. And whereas Veterans Day is a, they set aside to pay tribute to all veterans, both living and deceased, who have served in the United States armed forces on, and whereas these service members have displayed unwavering dedication to the principles of freedom, democracy, justice. And whereas the valor and valor of our veterans have protected our homeland and inspired generations to pursue a more secure and prosperous future. And whereas on this Veterans Day twenty twenty-three, we acknowledge the profound debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans for their enduring service and sacrifice. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim and declare November eleventh, twenty twenty-three as Veterans Day. I call upon all the willing to join me and the city council in expressing our profound appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to all who have served, whether in times of peace or conflict. Join us in commending the families of veterans for their unwavering support and for the sacrifices they have made. We honor and remember those veterans who have paid the ultimate price with their lives to protect our cherished freedoms. We also reaffirm our commitment to supporting and uplifting the well-being of our veterans and recognize the essential contributions of their sacrifice to the freedoms of our countries, of our communities. I encourage all citizens to participate in Veterans Day activities and to take a moment to thank a veteran for their service, signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Um, and now we move on to comment from the audience. Um, and, uh, do we have anyone that signed up to speak this evening?
Um. I believe not. No.
If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak, you're welcome to, um, first for you and by name and have three minutes. Okay, thank you. Uh, and, uh, did we have anyone online?
Uh, no.
Alright, um, and we did, uh, once I may have written, uh, okay, let's go ahead.
Uh, from Ash, Ashwini, right, yeah. Dear Duval administration, I am a resident of the east side, close to Duval. I am also an American citizen. My family and I love Duval for its charm and inspiring community feeling. We often visit Duval for its restaurants, parks, and community events. In a charming and providing place like Duval, it truly is very disappointing to see that a handful of individuals are using religion and fake concern for children to take away the joy and general feeling of safety provided by public displays of L G B T Q I A symbols and colors. I am a mother, and I know firsthand of the presence of pride symbols and colors offers a tremendous amount of comfort to the scared and struggling queer youth. Public displays of pride symbols show that we care about these young people and that they are not alone in their struggle. More importantly, these displays make the, the young L G B T Q I A children aware that we will protect them no matter what. People who claim that the pride symbol hurts their religion and society at large cannot be bothered from truth. Some people claim that public, that public display of pride symbols encourages our young people to embrace L G B T Q lifestyle. I can assure you that these beliefs are based on ignorance of this and sadly on hate at worst. The truth is that the presence of symbols that depict our support for L G B T Q I A youths saves their lives and helps them gain confidence and do well in their life. This is the truth, not an exaggeration. These symbols do not hurt anyone, but they help foster a caring and safe environment for the most vulnerable among us. I simply cannot emphasize enough about this fact. Moreover, as some of the, the opponents claim, being an L G B T Q I A person is not a lifestyle that someone chooses. Being an L G B T Q I A person is the way some people are born because of biological reasons. To penalize children and people for who they are is simply inhumane. L G B T Q I A individuals are often villainized ironically. They, especially transgender people, are often the victims of abuse and extreme violence. These facts make it even more crucial for our L G B T Q I A youngsters to know that they are not only welcoming Duval, but they will be safe from hatred and antisocial, of antisocial and anti-human elements as well.
Very exciting.
I strongly believe that such an assurance is vital for the well-being of our community as a whole. Because the display of pride symbols is so very critical to the sa- for the safety of the general public, I urge you to do the right thing, especially in the face of hate. Please undertake the labor of restoring Duval's L G B T Q I A friendly image. Again, doing so is especially urgent now that the current environment will, where L G B T Q. Um, there's one more from Cyrus Lyte. As my email is read this evening, I would like the council to consider an important opportunity to unite our town citizen, citizens. A community cannot advance itself for the betterment, betterment of its people if we are divided. The new cultural art commission and you, as council members, will hopefully take this important issue into consideration. As you have witnessed, including the stories in the national news about our city, there is a strong division on what should signify art, including a pride, pride flag displayed on our city's fence property. Many of our citizens believe this flag was on private property. When we discovered our tax dollars were used to display a flag that stands for sexuality, why was the city total, totally unaware of this? People warned that our community has already demonstrated displeasure with such an art display. It has caused a present division that has the potential to destroy our unity. Why do we, as wonderful town, as, as a wonderful town with great potential, think it's important to promote human sexuality to the public with our displays? Duval should be known as a town that celebrates all individuals who are, who they are and not force on individuals or a group's private sexual lifestyle on others. Cyrus Lyte.
Thank you. Alright, uh, moving on to the second sentence, we have a motion to approve. So.
Who?
All those in favor, please say aye. I can tell you. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to public hearings, we have three this evening. Uh, the first one is presentation of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four revenues and revenue hearing, uh, presented by my new director of management. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And then at the end of the presentation, uh, we will, uh, anyone that would like to provide a couple of comments, it will be welcome to, so first podium will provide three minutes. Um, and then council will discuss the revenue, uh, later on. So with that, Dr. Rinkton.
There you go.
I don't know. It should say version two.
Uh, the document itself said version two, but let me triple check just.
Okay. I can't, I think you're good. I think you're good.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, this is our first look at, um, revenues. Um, so basically this presentation, um, what you'll see here is twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two actuals. Um, you'll see twenty twenty-three estimates based on year-to-date actuals and projecting out through the end of the year. And then, um, twenty twenty-four, uh, based on the information that we have now, um, that we might anticipate for twenty-four. So you can put in some color.
I hate to interrupt you, um, just want to make quadruples for now.
I think it was the, um, sorry, it's the property tax that has the second version. I think the revenue was just.
The preliminary revenue is the one that, yeah. Okay, was, alright, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll have to bear with me as I'm learning these funds, the characteristics of revenue, the, you know, the, um, it's gonna be a big learning curve, um, but, um, I'm already, you know, getting educated and comfortable. Um, so we'll get through this together. I mean, go to the next slide. And Washington State does not have to use a system either. Um. I'm gonna get my fair, yeah, well, lots, I mean, lots of complexities, um, lots of characteristics to learn Chinese. So, um, I'm digging in, um. This is just the list of, of what we're gonna go through tonight. You can go to the next slide. Um, so these are revenue assumptions, um. Yeah, be a lot about this, other than this is how we determine, um, our fee rates. Question? Um, Councilwoman Appleton? Oh, no, sorry. Yes, you're right. We're, we're on public hearings. Yeah, sorry. Um, so yeah, these rates have been updated based on current, um, but the, um, the rates for the re- the budget, um, numbers were set based on the original. Um, you go to the next slide. This is, uh, property tax. Um, you can see twenty twenty-two actuals are updated, um. So, um, it's coming in as, revenues coming in as a respective, um, based on budget. Don't think there's, um, anything new to really put back here. Go ahead to the next slide.
Sure.
This is the property tax street fund. Again, revenues coming in as budgeted as projected. Go to the next slide. So this is sales tax, um. You see the year-to-date actual, um, which is a bit higher than, um, I think what was originally budgeted for twenty-two. Um, twenty twenty-three is based on year-to-date actuals and then averaging out for the rest of the year. Um, projections are looking like we might come in slightly under, um. This is what was originally budgeted, um, same thing for twenty twenty-four, that was what was the original budget. So information that we, um, that we get in the next month, so I'm like determining where, where we, it is a closer idea of where we're gonna end the year. Sales tax from instruction, um, it's set. The government. We go ahead to the next slide. This is strategic fund, um. We are probably not going to see, uh, the revenue for twenty twenty-three as estimated, looking to come in a little bit less. Um, we see twenty twenty-two actuals a little, um, less than twenty twenty-one. Um, but hopefully, if we're ready, not really, you know, get over the next, uh, coming weeks, we'll kind of determine, determine where we're gonna end for the next, uh, for this year. And then the next slide. Um, transportation benefit tax, or district sales tax, um, again trending down, um, that. The next slide. This is utility tax. Uh, originally, when I put this, uh, slide together, we anticipate in twenty twenty-three estimate it's probably a little bit high. Um, as I'm looking at currently, we're looking at that to come in probably as one foot four. We had originally budgeted one point three six, so we're actually coming in above budget, but it's probably not gonna be as high as what I've got on this slide here. Um, and then the twenty twenty-four estimate showing here is what was, um, originally budgeted. Um, and the information we have right now, um, is, you know, we have no information that would have us look to change that number for twenty twenty-four. Go to the next slide. The leader permits revenue. I don't know thirty-four, if there's anything you want to.
I know we're trending pretty well. We are gonna be right about the right spot for permits for this year. But because we had more non-residential development, we're actually in a trend or revenue higher than expected. So we're making small adjustments for twenty-three and for twenty-four.
Go to the next slide. Then have things.
If you want to do that, I mean, no, no, that's okay. Yeah, so schools will be adjusted. Obviously, today we're holding a public hearing for the school district. We have not yet adjusted it to the new, but to the new fee that's estimated. We will do that in the second run of the budget. And then, uh, Steve would probably be better placed to talk about the park and the traffic, because they're based on the C P A though.
I know, I can't, I haven't tried to.
Uh, I'd say in general, the park and traffic impact fee collections are down. So then due to some of the permit numbers being a little lighter than we had expected. But we had expected the front end of those permits to have their credits issued for parks that they were installing on city properties, as well as some of the transportation improvements that had come with the, uh, specifically the toll riders, whenever you have this kind of project. So we're through the bulk of their debts and now those will be received. Um, again, in fact, these are for school parks and traffic and not, uh, connection charges and utilities, but it isn't necessarily overall affecting the general expenditure side of the budget, because we only have some paperwork designed going on. Need for that flow, uh, Big Rock Design, uh, which is partially grant funded. And then Third Avenue, which is funded for design already, just not for construction all the way, and construction did not anticipate it, but also, so we should be fine in our respect for currently. Next slide.
Next slide.
You want the words, I need them to be back. And I guess I just take the, the GFCs for sewer, water and storm, uh, they were tracking a little around target, again, not as an issue, and sewer was a little behind, um, permits that come in, pay their fee at the time, that is a permit, so that's, uh, helpful, but that does not do anything when we're at the final stage, but they are allowed to go build their own. All in all, again, just fine for what we need, uh, under this current, like, cycle over twenty-four, as far as the revenue needed for expenditures on the other side of it.
Utility charges for services.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Pretty much.
I think the adjustments you had made were estimating for twenty-five, it was, uh, gonna be fairly low.
Yeah.
And then changing the number in twenty-four relative to the actual, uh, measure that is used by the city.
And our growth estimates pretty much right on target. We're probably a little bit over two percent, but we're trending towards a little bit higher.
Next slide.
Read. This is the money that helps fund, obviously, capital projects, but it also is our savings account for future projects as well. Just that does pay some debt, uh, for the city as well. So you can see the trend lines we put in the actual for twenty twenty-two. We have our twenty, uh, twenty-three estimate. Um, so we'll continue to watch that. October was a larger month, so we'll see that in November. Um, the end of the fiscal year for most of our homeowners is the end of October, so they try to close a ton of homes in October, November, um, and then obviously more towards the summers when we see our higher, um, our higher values as well. But as you know, it's mostly new home that are selling versus existing homes, so we're continuing to watch that. Um, I don't think we'll need to make any, um, changes on that. We're, we're trending, we're trending well.
Next slide. Um, so this has been our questions since this public hearing. Um, I will go and ask if anyone in the audience would like to provide a couple of comments. Saying that, we'll, at least for the public hearing. And, uh, move on and to the River View, River View School Impact Fee Public Hearing, uh, with Director Thomas, um, and I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and House members of our community. We're gonna bring up, I mean, the presentation really quick. But this is our tradition every November, where we bring in the school district impact fee and their comp plan for, um, approval. We approved the comp plan by reference into, sorry, their capital spend by reference into our comp plan. Uh, so we'll go through the presentation. Uh, they did come and share some information, I believe it was in September, and I put that date in the agenda bill. Next slide. Uh, so we have a fairly old IOA with the school district, so we collect their fee on behalf of them. And then we have a sixty-five dollar administrative fee, and then we, uh, pay them every month, whatever we owe them. Uh, there are not a lot of changes to the district, but just for members of the community, our district encompasses about two hundred and fifty square miles. It includes Croatian, Dubal, and incorporated King County. They serve approximately three thousand students. Uh, we have three elementary schools, one middle school, one high school, and three alternative possible programs and a weekly twelve alternative current partnership program. Uh, the district does estimate a slight decline in student enrollment. This is kind of a continuing trend across the nation. And in this state where we're seeing a little school, um, trending down, uh, for enrollment. Next slide. Uh, what are their projected improvements over this next, you know, planning period? Uh, a new K through five facility, in addition to the high school. The total middle school addition, major facility maintenance, technology, security upgrade, and portable classrooms. I put a little star, um, for the one item that is, at least at this point, school and path funded. I'm assuming that when they are more geared towards their fee-free practice, they'll feed them the impact fee that will be associated with that as well. Next slide. So this is where kind of we, you know, what we do every year, we look at where were we historically, where are we going? And so we are gonna see an increase, uh, from twenty twenty-three into twenty twenty-four. Uh, it is a fairly small increase, I for this next year. Uh, so we do estimate kind of what we look at in our budget, so we don't mean to make a ton of adjustments, but we're gonna make a small adjustment, because in the last hearing, we looked at impact fee revenue, so we'll make a small, a small adjustment to that, but it's pretty small, but if we get two hundred thousand two hundred times two thousand dollars is probably not so small at the end of the day to the district. So we're gonna make that adjustment. Um, I think it was probably four or five years ago, our, uh, council worked along with a couple of other cities and looked at how much, uh, we're gonna collect. Most cities look at a fifty percent discount rate. But some cities are going down to a twenty-five percent discount rate, and Duval chose that methodology quite a few years ago. And they're retaining that methodology, so that's one of the reasons why you see our impact fee a little bit higher, obviously, than King County, because King County uses the fifty percent discount rate. So our recommendation, obviously, we're holding the public hearing here, um, but we do want to approve the resolution adopting the twenty-three through twenty-nine revenue school district capital facilities plan by the reference into our comp plan and adopt the twenty twenty-four school impact fee for the school district. That concludes the presentation for the hearing.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide a public just? Not seeing any, so we'll close. Public hearing for the revenue school districts impact fee and open the public hearing for the presentation of the twenty twenty-four property tax levy and property tax hearing, uh, Derek Donovan. Tom, you want to pull?
More.
Awesome. Um, okay, property tax.
All right, I'll give you one second.
Sure. We'll go ahead and go to the next slide, um. Okay, so this is, um, basically where your company tax goes. It, it just shows a twenty twenty-three property, um, and the tax rate for the asset fund. These are twenty twenty-four calculations on twenty twenty-four, through the prior year, um, when it back to levy, um, and then going through the various, uh, calculations. Construction and refunds to get to our allowable estimate. We go to the next slide. I think the virtual economy for levy rates. Slide. This is assessed value versus what we raised over the past ten years. Then the next slide. And this is a city property tax example, and we're going to do that with you. With the one percent. And we can also see the change in assessed value of the twenty twenty-four. Up and down compared to twenty twenty-three. Um, so basically with a one percent increase. You can see the levy at one thousand twenty, whereas without, it would be at nine oh one. You live on its own. Basically, whether you know. You can bang. One percent. They're allowed to increase property taxes by maximum of one percent for here, taxing district levies lack one percent. We go to the next one. I guess somewhere five. We're having some this. All right, uh, is there anyone that would like to? Saying that, you know, please, I'm there, public care. And move on to the other angles. Uh, first up is mayor report, um, so I apologize in advance, it will be, uh, a little bit longer than normal. Uh, so first up, I just wanna remind folks that if you haven't seen the email from Association of Long Island Cities, that uh, they're looking for volunteers and applications to serve on multiple EDC committees and state committees and borders. Uh, first one is the IPOC file laws committee. Uh, this is a really important one for the Association of Long Island Cities, of even looking at changing some of the structure and how we operate, including, um, redistricting, uh, and changing, working, and some sort of changing away and borders, like the districts of the um, EDC board districts, um, throughout the state. Uh, there's also an opportunity to serve on the Education and Training Advisory Committee, the Federal Legislative Priorities Committee, the State Legislative Priorities Committee, and the Nominating Committee for, uh, next year's open board positions. Um, that closes on November thirteenth, so if anyone's interested, please send your application in, or if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Um, wanted to report that, uh, almost two weeks ago now, um, a attendant that sounded, well, Mayor Proton and I did attend the Sound Cities Association MetLife Dinner, uh, where we have the featured speaker of Jeff and West, uh, he's a professor at the University of Washington. Um, and they, uh, part of their focus is actually identifying false information, identifying AI. Um, really, uh, they've been focused on, uh, teaching people on how to be, um, this information or, uh, and what have you, now there's a few terms like disinformation as well. Um, it just really fascinating. I actually would love to bring, uh, him and his team and Duval and actually do a session for our community. Uh, I think as a very engaged, information-hungry community, uh, that what he has discovered and their team has researched and presented would be absolutely fascinating and, um, educational to everyone. So we'll probably be looking into that in the not-too-distant future. Um, next up, we have a, uh, um, northern, or sorry, uh, Snow Valley Mayor's meeting this morning. And so, uh, four mayors of this Hollywood Valley Met, uh, we didn't have a lot of substantive conversation today. It's a weird Tuesday, um, but we're looking ahead to, uh, December, um, and, uh, discussing, you know, just how our meetings are moving forward, because it is difficult for all of us to meet um, even once a month, uh, just early mornings with all of the, the other commitments that we all have. Uh, today, we also had the Sound Cities Association North End Mayor's meeting. Uh, so lots of discussion about some interruptions that have been occurring in city councils across, uh, the region, as well as uh, just looking forward, uh, with budgets, et cetera. Um, many people are just in a similar situation where some of our revenues are coming in as generally as expected. But nothing too, um, nothing too major, especially when you look at the state revenue forecast being nearly a billion higher than expected, uh, after they were expecting a significant decrease. Um, the Snow Valley Government's Association Dinner is tomorrow evening at the Sailor's Lodge, um, so if you plan on attending, I have a card, so please reach out to Jamie Markman. Um, I would volunteer to carpool with all the members from Seattle, so, uh, hope to see many of you there tomorrow. And then, um, finally, Sound Cities Association Annual Meeting is coming up on December sixth at the Ritten Community Center. Uh, and so of course, that's what we go on dues and center. Um, and a reminder for the group, and I will talk about it at SGA tomorrow night. Um, I'm in my sixth and final year on the Sound Cities Association Board, and so, um, they will be looking for a representative from either Duval, Carnation, Snow Valley, or North Bend. And that whole vote will happen at a caucus meeting. Um, so if you're interested or know anyone else in the valley that is interested in putting the time in, um, it is in a really important role. It's not overly time-consuming, um, but it also gets you right in the thick of, uh, all of the regional issues and state issues that are happening that SDA addresses. And that concludes my report. Anyone have any questions? Saying that, we'll go ahead and then move on to, um, the next portion of this.
Great, thank you. Um, good evening, council, mayor, lawyers of the public, um, Cynthia McNapp, city administrator. Um, first, going a little off script, I just wanna, uh, appreciate for a moment, uh, how difficult it is to walk into the city and learn all of the acronyms. Uh, a year ago, uh, about at this time, I walked into the same place where our new finance worker walked in and not known read and all the other acronyms, and it, it, it took me a year to understand slightly better than where I was a year ago, but, um, it's a lot, so, uh, just a lot of appreciation for doing this and holding for a public hearing, but I, you know.
Your second meeting.
I hear you say your second meeting. Um, so at the council, um, uh, at the workshop, we did the majority of the city administrators' report. Um, there are two additional items that, um, I wanted to discuss tonight with council. Um, the first, I included everyone's seat, um, some revised proposed language, um. During public comment, um, we've had a couple of meetings in the last few months where commoners from the audience have handed council, um, written materials or pictures. We don't really have a process for what we do with them, so they're not submitted to the footer for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Um, sometimes council accepts them, keeps them and looks at them, and they potentially could guide your deliberations on the topic. Other times, council doesn't pick it up, doesn't look at it, it just sits here, and so, um, I have proposed some language on what to do with that information, so that we have a process that we understand. Because what we don't wanna have happen is people come, give public comments, hand out materials, and then, um, there's no process for what to do with it. Um, so this is just an idea. I wanted to blow up the city council on establishing a process for doing something or having a procedure for when, um, public commoners give you things. Um, uh, Daniel, um, are city attorney, do you have anything else that you, I wanna add to the conversation?
Oh. No, I mean, I think that's great. I think having a process for it rather than two people looking at it, stack papers in the middle, kind of what's the expectation, of course, you know, for the public's, you know. Of course, I mean, they can always reach out to the city. This is not something that would preclude anybody from communicating or providing, city is just what happens in this scenario.
Yeah, and I should also add, this would not cover things like when Ikers of Diamonds came and they were on the agenda, giving a presentation and they had handouts. That is part of their presentation as a planned agenda item. This is for just things that are handed out that This is for just things that are handed out that you may or may not want to look at. Um, we don't have a process for what we do with that stuff. And so this doesn't really require a vote, more of a kind of consent of council, which way you would like to go forward and if you would like to amend that language that's on the agenda to uh, reflect some process.
Council member circle.
I think the red line maybe got rid of several for the meaning.
Any objections?
Okay, really? Okay, thank you. Um, and then there were one, there's one other item. So we included in the council packet this um, for this council meeting, the mockups of the welcome signs that um, our community events coordinator put together, helped with some member rehearsal, um, who added um, some color and some changes um, to it. And so at this point, looking for um, council to provide guidance on their interest in in moving forward with this project. Um, we would uh, put welcoming signs in our entrances to our community here. Uh, so uh, north, south, across the bridge. Um, so kind of the same thing, doesn't really require a vote, but consent to council that you would like to move forward on this project.
Um, councilor Shaper in the map room.
Uh, the uh, we're proposing both signs, uh, use of both signs or we're being asked to choose one or the other?
Choose one or the other, we could, we would probably want to put two, uh, who'd be one or the other. Um, so the first kind of predicate question is, are you interested in doing this project? And the second one, which one would you like to put up?
I guess, um, I'll just simplify part of it. Does anybody have a check to design program? And then the preference, uh, would be nice to hear what people's preferences are. Uh, councilor Shaper.
Yeah, I think the second one, could you, could you show us? Yeah, I think it's a bit lengthy, to tell you the truth. Uh, and then we can all, you know, the, you can debate, well, maybe we should also add, you know, some other marching less group or whatever. Uh, and remember, these are like, well, people will see these as a crime and black, right? I, I like the shorter version much, much better.
Councilmember Nafflin.
I agree. I think whenever you make a list, someone is going to look at that list and feel like they're not included, and that's the opposite of what we're aiming for. So even though I think it's, you know, I think that list is great, it's just, I think the simple is better. I prefer the first one.
Councilor or Mayor Proton and then councilmember membership?
I like them both, but my favorite is this one, it's simple and easy to read as you pass by.
I would kind of prefer the second one. Um, but I would take out, I would simplify, I would remove all and kind of put that at the top. And then just having our races, religions, apples listed underneath to try to make it a little easier to read. And change the blue to a darker color, stand out one.
Last up, I, I mean, I, I'm fine uh, with the first one. I do agree it's inclusive. One thing I know that was mentioned in the last meeting, when the initial drafts came out, was potentially providing something to shop owners or other things that want to do that. There is a program, national program, which is called Welcoming Communities, they have a variance of the second that can be scaled and sized, you know, and so I just want to put forward, that might be an option to go with the signage in the the entrances with the city and then whether working through chamber or others, that, that we could provide something that was was more, you know, inclusive of some of the language that you want. Um, councilmember Supple on this, on second, just an option to consider.
And we can um, we can create um, uh, eight by tens of both as well. Um, and that would probably be fairly easy to do and and work for our business community to provide options for that.
And I appreciate your comments about the contrast. I was trying to pull in the cities, uh, remark colors, but you're right, driving by the beautiful lighter.
I think I like this one because it's simple and easy to read. Um, and great councilmember's comments about that, that all is simply simple. I, I do like both. When you're driving, this is um, impactful when you're going to a park um, or other city facility. Um, that would be more, more appropriate. Uh, so it sounds like we've got consensus to afford.
Uh, nice suggestion.
Yes.
I would, I would put re-welcome all on the top and then just have delete all from the, the list there in the separate list, just religions. Make it more readable.
Okay, I hear that, thank you.
All right, well, thank you everyone. Um, Dr. Lash, you and I will work on getting this line. We'll get the signs uh, put together and I think it's going to really be beautiful coming into the city after the thing there. So thank you.
I'm excited. Thank you all for uh, the thought and especially councilmember membership for this specific item. This is something our community has needed for a really long time. Uh, and no better time than now, so thank you. And okay, we will move on to council committee and I don't have any regrets. We have any thinking? It's a note. So go ahead and move on to our new business. Um, now, you know, decisions made tonight, this is an opportunity for a constant discussion. We can make a bit of an argument through, but we can't, we can't. In this one earlier. All right, uh, so we'll move on to the new business agenda, bill twenty three dash seventy six, adopting twenty twenty four revenues. Um, and now it's opportunity to have council ask questions. Council have any questions? Councilmember Nafflin.
Yeah, the, the one thing I was going to ask before is um, I just wanted to make sure. I couldn't find it, I was trying to log in, but the sewer rate, we approved them to take the lower, right? And that is what I implemented.
If you go to the same website, go to finance and go to you guys rates, so table is nineteen through twenty two, and then the math on twenty three, you can.
You could tell the facts with this.
Yeah, we took four percent only for sewer last year instead of the general, I think it was.
Okay, because the projections stay. The projections for the sewer revenue stayed the same even after you made that decision and, and so I wonder, anyway, that's. So even though the revenue projection didn't necessarily get adjusted, the actual like it's charged.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we went over all.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, and well, let's move on to the rest of the first. And I don't, I'm not seeing any councilmember that one.
Oh, yeah, the one thing that I noticed when the detail came is that interest revenue is so much higher than expected, so that um, lovely. Really great. After years of what, point oh, one percent interest, you know. So, yeah, I get something like three or four percent is, you know, hitting the lottery.
Yeah, and I want to compliment um, all the work that went into that investment plan. Um, it is, we're seeing the fruits of a really well thought out investment strategy from, you know, multiple years back and uh, it's, it's exciting to see.
So I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that, but I.
Not really a question. Now, we're probably going to concede a million of them all this time. That's for interest, but yeah, that won't last.
I already talked to you about rent cuts.
It's all plastics, it's the fighting.
But it is nice for now, but yeah, I'll continue to stabilize. Any other revenue questions? Uh, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty three dash seventy seven, approval school impact fees, any questions there? Uh, councilmember Shaper?
This is a real question. This is, this is really something that's already approved, obviously, by the district themselves. And the ruling just passed through us.
Absolutely. We only collect the, their policy decision. Um, the council will be comfortable with this this evening and marking this off our budget list.
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to approve uh, Agenda Bill twenty three seventy seven and approve the proposed resolution implementing a school impact fee for the Riverview School District beginning January first twenty twenty four and adopt the district's capital facilities plan by reference in good city and devolve as comprehensive plan.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in the neighborhood, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty three dash seventy eight, uh, twenty twenty four property tax levy. Is there any, are there any questions for uh, finance director this evening? Councilmember Nafflin?
I have a question, but I did have potentially a proposal. I, I would like to uh, emotional maybe interdise at first. I, I would like to propose that we um, bank the one percent. So much of the revenue has come in um, above. We have an extraordinary amount of one-time revenue that we know isn't going to last. So banking the opportunity to um, increase the property tax level levy in later years where we have lean years. It's a strategy that a lot of cities that have gone through radical use. Um, where our property tax levy has grown dramatically in recent years due to new construction and just um, new value from people building additions, remodel, uh, all kinds of improvements, improve that, expand our levy. Um, so I, I really think that it would be prudent to sturdify the opportunity to raise that one percent into future years where we might be needing more. And I think Monroe recently took bank capacity uh, for several years and implemented it all at once. I'm trying to think of some other cities. I go and look at other cities, but it's still a while, it's strange, but um, something that I've noticed, I think maybe Samantha has banked for years when they were going through growth. Maybe some policy too. Anyway, it's a pretty common strategy, just to bank that one percent.
Any other question or comments from council? Councilmember Shaper?
So, so, so just sure I understand, the banking would be actually not taking the one percent this year, but potentially taking the one percent plus the bank one percent, which would be.
It could be money loss.
Yeah, yeah, which would be a uh, uh, well, obviously a bigger one-time tax hit for the uh, property tax. Not, not a roll, just the one time. So, so they wouldn't have a, they wouldn't pay that one percent this year, but they would pay potentially three percent.
But they would save money for, I guess, I keep what you're saying psychologically in a way that.
It, it, that was one, one of the real.
Any other council comments on that? Um, oh, do you have something to add again? Oh.
My thinking now.
Actually, after twenty years in government, highly recommend not supporting that. Um, it's a compounding impact, so you don't take that forty thousand each this year, which is very small enough for taxpayer. Um, you've lost that forty thousand permanently. So if you do that one percent plus one percent next year, you're still lost that forty thousand. We already know that over a two-year period, our WCA insurance costs are up over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I think that that, that would be irresponsible to our taxpayers as well as to the city fiduciary to not take this one percent. Um, and one of the cities that has been mentioned, the city of Samantha, has been rolling in cash for a long, long time. They don't have revenue issues. Um, we are still a city that is trying to determine how to fund a permanent emergency manager, a communication person, and an events coordinator. Um, and if we are going to stay true to the values and the desires of our community, we have actually a responsibility um, to maintain um, our ongoing revenues and make up where we can. Uh, interest is high, great, that's one-time revenue. Uh, council has special funds from sales tax for construction, one-time revenue that can't be clogged back into general fund to fund city salaries. We are still understaffed as a city, we still have a city hall to build. Um, so if we are not doing what we can to maintain existing resources and keep in mind as well that that forty thousand, when you look at a four point five percent inflation, that's pennies. But it's important funding that the city needs to operate and stabilize over the long run. We don't have the option, that one percent property tax limit in Washington State is arbitrary. There is no map behind it, and it is drowning local governments long time, long term. When um, I became mayor six years ago, the complaint was, we don't have enough money. We don't have enough money. We were in a very similar financial position, housing growth was still accelerating. Uh, but we also don't know when that's going to end. And if we hadn't been taking that one percent, there are things that we wouldn't be doing today. So I just, um, this is something fundamentally, uh, after a career in government and watching government start, um, watching what happens when our school levies don't pass and our classroom sizes increase, that when government does recommend taking taxes, especially in community regards where studies show local governments have seventy percent confidence level from their residents and their motors. Um, we're not being responsible, uh, because we're not planning for the future. So um, that's, I have a very strong perspective on this. Um, and I just wanted to share that with council as well. Mayor Proton, can you?
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember how many years ago. I, I voted no on this before, um, so I don't consider it like an automatic thing that, you know, I think it's worth having a conversation about strategy. For me personally, this year, um, I'm in favor of it because, you know, we're in the middle of a biennium. And so it, it was factored into the budget, and so I'm just concerned about like, well, what would we have to reshuffle or where would that come from and what would we do? So for, for those reasons for me right now in this year, I, I would like to be supportive of it.
Any other feedback from council? Uh, the city administrator now.
Yeah, the, the city directors have considered um, whether or not it means sense to bank this. And I'll just share really briefly that the city administration or the city staff recommendation is not to bank it because we're in the middle of a uh, two-year budget and our projections are based on, to some degree, what we expected to take in property tax.
Uh, councilwoman.
During the motion. I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty three seventy eight, affecting an ordinance fixed amount of the annual ad valorem property tax levy for this full year, twenty twenty four, providing for server bill fee and establishing an effective.
I wanted to make a motion on what I brought over, so I don't. You can do it, so you need to wait a second and then you can make an amendment, especially you can propose an amendment. You have to have the motion on the floor before you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion or amendments? Councilmember Shaper?
Yeah, I, I very much appreciate Jennifer's desire, uh, councilmember Matt's desire to save our taxpayers and let the, you know, that's, you know, that's exactly what we should all be trying to do uh, all of the time. In this case, I am actually uh, not in favor of banking the one percent. Uh, simply because of, of the uh, you know, the costs that were, the future costs that we're looking at. The impact from inflation, the high inflation we've seen uh, will continue to dog this uh, in the future, even after inflation goes, goes down. Uh, and uh, I see that one percent as a small way to help mitigate those types of, uh, those types of risks. So therefore, I'm, I'm in favor of actually not banking it, but going ahead and thinking.
Uh, councilmember membership.
Well, um, slightly different perspective. Um, I, I think, you know, I, I appreciate the, the perspective in terms of like, he can, he can, he can. I think this is one of those challenging areas where, you know, it's an opportunity to bank for sort of continue it in the future. I think the thing that offsets it to some extent for me is both one, that it is budgeted, although that's something we could adjust. But I think the other comment that was made about, you know, currently being also a good investment climate, so there's also an opportunity to essentially grow those funds as part of the contingency plan. So there's also an opportunity to essentially grow those funds as part of the contingency plan, sort of this year, kind of going into the biennium versus, um, using it to mitigate an expense downside. I, it's obviously two sides of the coin. I think, uh, the mayor's point in particular around opportunity costs. Um, I think the, there is a broader conversation that we're still beginning to have tangentially to this in terms of how we continue to, to staff and what particular resources we, we want to have as part of the city that I think is for a future date. But that's from my perspective. That's kind of why I'm leaning against, um, the opportunity to back now, just because I think there's an opportunity cost that we can use in terms of short-term risk protection.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
All the, all those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes. And with that, um, that is the end of our agenda. So unless there are objections, we are. All right. Well, that's all. All right. So we will have executive session, um, fifteen minutes. Uh, and then we'll not have any further business, but we will come up to formal nature. So, um, for those of none, if you don't want to stick around, you don't have to, um, otherwise you're welcome.
We just really are.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you. RCW, um, it's under RCW forty-two dot three-one dot one zero seven.
Actually, it's one ten. I had to look at this, uh.
There's one.
Over two thirty-one tens.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
All right. We will. John, are you going to get your pen and write your?
Everybody can go except for.
Yeah. Was, I was, I'm really not on the.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's not. Politics.
We've got a very, very big one where we want people to get involved in their local politics. This is really the first time that we've been.
Yeah.
Got very involved five years ago for separate reasons.
But we're, we're thinking around longer this time.
Yeah.
That is. This is the first time I've had a job where I didn't also need to work a second job and maybe as me tell. We need to get to the city. Something a little better. Isn't who's still.
If it wasn't. They actually didn't know that, well, you can use your own car. The taxes you can carry. Did they give you this?
Yeah. We didn't care.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He looks like, oh, we shot, you know, we shot. Oh, yeah.
Did you?
Yeah. You're the boss.
The one that was saying, which I really. I mean, you don't get any more.
Yeah. Next week, eight fifty go first.
Starting at five thirty. Yes. Yeah. I need to, I follow up on anything.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, it would have been. And you aren't, you aren't going to hear anything about it from next year. But if you want to change them, I just. And this was different because they came new budget. Yeah, it wouldn't have been nice to.
I really. So.